I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is Wednesday, October 1st at 7:00 PM, and this is our regular meeting of the Ottawa City Commission. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Reed.
Present.
Commissioner Skidmore.
Present.
Commissioner Jorgensen.
Present.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Kayler.
Present.
We are all present in conference this evening. I would like to welcome everyone who's here this evening in the chambers and anyone who might be listening on the radio or watching it on government access channel or watching it as it is livestreamed. And we do have closed caption for our meetings nowadays, so we are thankful for that. We are going to begin the evening this, begin the meeting this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be followed by our invocation led by Pastor Tim Soule from the Westminster Presbyterian.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was impressed that it gets so quiet in here when you say "one minute" back here. I wish we could get that to happen at church. People just keep right on talking. I'm gonna try that. Maybe we'll have to go on TV. I hadn't thought about that. Thank you for having me. Let us turn our hearts and minds to God in prayer. Almighty God, we give you thanks for this community in which we live. We've just celebrated 150 years that we have been together as Ottawa, and it was a joyful celebration. We ask now, as we head into the future, that we may work diligently to make this place, this community, a place where everyone is welcome, can find the things and needs that they have met in this place, and together that we may build lives that are pleasing to you. We gather this month mindful of people who are having difficulty in their homes and who are alphantimes, victims of violence, and we would ask your blessing upon them. And we ask your blessing upon all of those who seek to work with these people and to alleviate this violence, not only in our community but everywhere. May your blessing be upon them. We remember, too, those who are battling cancer of many kind, but especially those with breast cancer. May your blessing and strength, your healing mercies be upon each of them and on those who are seeking to minister to them, to care for people who are battling this disease, and those who are seeking to research and alleviate it from our lives. We're recognizing, too, those who are differently able than we are. Lord, you make each of us, and you create us in your image, and you give us different abilities. May we see what each of us is capable of doing and not look so much at what we can't. Because together, you make us and give us the things that we need to be community. So for all of these people working for these causes, for our commission, for our police, for our fire, for all of those who watch over us, may they do their jobs well. May your blessing be upon them, and may this community of Ottawa continue to be a place of goodness, of growth, and of joy for those who are here. We ask this in your mighty name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We'll begin with item number six, which is the consent agenda, which this evening includes just the agenda. And do I hear a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second, Dan.
All in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The agenda is approved. And that brings us to public comments. Do we have anyone registered this evening for public comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so I will dispense with the reading of that paragraph and move on down to item number eight, which is declaration. At this time, I'd like to give commissioners a chance to declare any conflict or communication they've had that might influence their ability to consider this evening's issues impartially. Okay, then we will move right on into new business and begin with item number nine.
A proclamation recognizing October 2014 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Domestic Violence Awareness Month focuses attention on victims of domestic violence and their children, and promotes the support of shelters and community programs that serve them. Melissa Henson, is Melissa here this evening? Haven't seen her. Well, we will eventually get this proclamation to her. She is the Franklin County Program Coordinator with the Willow Domestic Violence Center, and I'm sure she will gladly accept this proclamation, and it reads as follows: Whereas family and relationships are often counted among life's greatest blessings, and tragically, many Kansans' relationships are tarnished by violence and fear. And whereas domestic violence includes verbal, emotional, economic, sexual, and physical abuse, and all forms of abuse can carry long-range physical and mental health implications. And whereas the effects of domestic violence reach far beyond its victims and perpetrators, causing disruption in our schools, places of work and worship, and neighborhoods. And whereas during October 2014, the Franklin County Domestic Violence Unit and other concerned agencies and groups in Franklin County sponsor and promote Domestic Violence Awareness Month to focus community-wide attention on abused women and their children, and to promote support of shelters and community programs that serve them. Now therefore, this governing body of the City of Ottawa, Kansas, does hereby proclaim October 2014 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urges all its citizens to speak out against sexual and domestic violence, to provide support for survivors of this heinous crime, to encourage community leaders to hold offenders accountable, and to make prevention efforts a priority by hosting events, by creating policies at school and work, and by supporting and participating in ongoing programs designed to reduce and eventually eliminate domestic violence as a societal problem. Signed this first day of October by the Mayor Linda Reed. And I don't believe Melissa has made it yet, so we will get that to her. So we will, we, October's a busy month, so we have several proclamations this evening. And item number 10, please.
A proclamation recognizing October 2014 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a partnership of national public service organizations, professional medical associations, and government agencies working together to promote breast cancer awareness, to share information on the disease, and provide greater access to screening services. And this proclamation will be read by Commissioner Jorgensen.
Well, good evening. We were challenged as a group this evening to wear pink, and so each of the commissioners has on something pink, and that's in honor of this proclamation. And the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas October is recognized nationally as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas breast cancer is the second most common form of cancer and the second leading cause of deaths among women in the United States. And whereas the Franklin County has an active women's cancer support group, and whereas treatment for breast cancer is more likely to be successful when detected early, and the Franklin County Breast Cancer Support Group strives to raise awareness about women getting early exams. Now therefore, the governing body of the City of Ottawa, Kansas, does hereby proclaim October 2014 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and urges all women and their families in Ottawa, Kansas, to get the facts about breast cancer. Signed this first day of October 2014 by Linda Reed, the mayor. And do we have a representative this evening to accept this award? Okay, well, we'll make sure that it gets into the right hands.
We sure will. And I might speak on their behalf. There's a Second Annual Bras Across Old Mary, which is an event this Saturday down at Haley Park from 10 to 12:30, 10 to 1:00, actually. And all the proceeds leading up to this event and all day, all the time Saturday, all those funds will go toward Franklin County Cancer Foundation, and it is for cancer awareness in general, but specifically breast cancer awareness, and stringing decorated bras across the River Bridge at 12:30 that day, so. And that will then move us on to item number 11.
A proclamation recognizing October 2014 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month.
National Disability Employment Awareness Month raises awareness of disability employment issues and celebrates the many and varied contributions of people with disabilities. Craig Evans, the Director of Day Services for COF Training Services, will accept the proclamation, which will be read by our mayor, Pastor Tim, and Commissioner Skidmore.
Yes, I have it right here. I really appreciate Tim's prayer about different abilities. We all do have different abilities. We all have different colored hair. Some are dark, some are blonde, and some have no hair, so. I'm sorry, Bobby didn't mean to interrupt here. But the whole idea is, is, you know, let's celebrate the differences and not condemn them, and I think that's better off for all of us if we do that. So let me read this proclamation. Whereas workplaces welcoming the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. And whereas in this spirit, the City of Ottawa, Kansas, is recognizing National Disability Employment Awareness Month this October to raise awareness about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of people with disabilities. And whereas activities during this month will reinforce the value and talent people with disabilities add to our workplaces and communities and affirm Ottawa's commitment to an inclusive community. Now therefore, the governing body of the City of Ottawa, Kansas, does hereby proclaim October 2014 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and in so doing calls upon employers and schools, other community organizations in Ottawa to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities, and to advance its important message that people with disabilities are equal to the task throughout the year. Signed this first day of October 2014 by Linda Reed, our mayor.
Mr. Evans, if you want to come accept this, and then we can have you introduce your, the people that are with you and saying, you can have the, and Chuck wants to get your picture here.
Face the camera. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. One more.
Thank you. You can speak at the speaker so everyone can hear you, and I'd have them face the group here.
Well, on behalf of COF, we'd like to thank the city for this proclamation and for the recognition. It's very comforting to be a service provider in such a warm, embracing community. It makes it a lot easier and a lot more fun. I've always felt that the City of Ottawa was really blessed to have an organization like COF, and I still feel that way. But I also feel that COF is truly blessed to have the community of Ottawa to encompass us. It's been a wonderful marriage, and we look forward to years of serving in this community. So on behalf of COF, tonight I bring with me Stephanie King, Mary Gifford, and Lou Born. These are three of our top-notch workers with our program, and that's kind of the slogan at COF. We keep it simple. COF, we work. So we, again, we recognize the recognition. We'd be doing it with or without the recognition, because that's just, that's what we do. So, but again, it is nice, and it is appreciated, and again, it is, it is a blessing to serve in a community that is so engaging and embracing to what, to what we're doing and with the people that we serve. So thank you.
Thank you. Craig, do you have some friends of COF with you as well? I didn't know if you wanted to introduce anybody else, or you got it?
Actually, thank you. Yeah, I'll just stay up here for a little while. I'm comfortable. It is, there's a lot to discuss when it comes to COF, so it's always hard to keep organized, especially over this past year. It's always been known that this, the community that we live in supports the organization that's been here for 40-plus years, but never more evident than this past year. This past year has brought the birth of the Friends of COF organization, which is primarily made up of people within our community, some of which are here tonight. And it is, to this day, it is overwhelming, the amount of time, talent, and treasure that these people give to our organization. So again, it is very humbling, but also, I guess it's good feedback knowing that people do believe in kindness, compassion, and I believe that, again, it just makes our community the community that we all want to be in. So it's, it's been a wonderful year. So the Friends of COF, again, many of them are here, has been amazingly successful over the past year, and much like COF the organization, I'm sure that organization too will grow and grow and become a more vibrant part of this community.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Wait, Craig, before, sorry.
Yes.
Nothing like having questions for our proclamation. We never do that, but I wonder if you may be able to tell us about, since we are celebrating employment awareness with individuals who may have a disability or an ability, whatever you count it as, could you tell us where your friends work at in the community?
Absolutely.
So we can celebrate those employers, too?
Absolutely. Well, just among my group here, all three actually work for some employers outside of our community, which should make everyone happy, because we're bringing in county dollars into our county, so that's always fun. But no, Stephanie, if you'd raise your hand, Stephanie, please. Thank you. Stephanie also works part-time at Wendy's here in town, been there for quite some time. Another one of our workers out at COF, Stacy Chandler, works at Wendy's. We have excellent partnerships with the Walmart Distribution Center. I really don't want to leave anyone out. Fastenal, we have a great partnership with Fastenal. We've done a lot of things with a lot of area businesses. Help me out. Well, we're talking local. Those are those dollars we bring from out of town that we enjoy spending, don't we?
Hastings.
Oh, yes, I could not forget about Hastings. We've done things for Calmar Truck. You know, a lot of your prominent businesses in town, because they know what it takes to be successful. So when they have a need, they call COF, and we're always there to meet those needs, because you have such hard-working, work ethic-focused people like those sitting next to me. I'm going through my list. It's, I could be up here for hours talking about COF. Yeah, but thank you very much. Again, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item 12, please.
Resolution for sale of temporary notes to finance the Tea Hanger project.
This resolution authorizes the City Commission, the City Manager, and other officers of the City of Ottawa to execute the sale of temporary notes in connection with the Tea Hanger project at Ottawa Municipal Airport. Mr. Artiberry is going to present to us.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Typically, when a city is issuing debt for a project, there's three steps you have to undertake. The first one is to authorize the project, and I believe you started that step the last meeting you had when you began, you passed a resolution authorizing the improvements. Secondly, you authorize the sale of the debt, in this case, the sale of the temporary notes, and that's the resolution that you have in front of you today. It authorizes us and staff and Q-Tech Rock to go out and solicit bids for the notes. We're planning on doing that just in the next coming days here, and our approach to this sale, because this is a smaller note issue, only about $530,000, is rather than going out and taking bids broadly around the region and using a detailed disclosure document, we think we can save money by actually just getting bids from local banks. We think we'll be able to complete the transaction with lower fees, and on an issue of this size, that really makes a difference in your overall cost. So that's the second step. The third step, then, would be to come back to you with the results of the bidding in hand, and our plan is to come back on the 15th of October with those results, and at that time, you review the results and then pass a resolution actually authorizing the issuance of the notes. So that's the three steps and where we're at today. You also, Richard wanted me to pass on, you are also going to be considering issuing notes for a land acquisition project shortly, too. We had hoped originally to kind of combine the two sales into one single issue, but the tax treatment on the two different notes, the federal income tax treatment on the interest on those notes is a little different. So we'll have to be selling two different series of notes to begin with, and quite honestly, we've already got one bank that's given us a very good indication of a rate on this first note, and we think we need to proceed along that line rather than delaying things and trying to combine it into a single note.
Are there any questions for Mr. Artiberry? I appreciate your work on our behalf, that's for sure.
Sure.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner.
I move that we approve the resolution for the sale of temporary notes to finance the Tea Hanger project.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Dan.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the resolution for the sale of temporary notes for the Tea Hanger project. Is there any discussion? If not, could we have a vote, please?
How do you vote, Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kayler?
I vote yes.
Mayor Reed?
I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, item 13.
A resolution providing for notice of public hearing concerning the advisability of the creation of a Community Improvement District, CID, and declaring the intent of the city to levy a CID sales tax.
This resolution will set the date and the time of the public hearing on the above action for October 20th at 5:30. And Mrs. Lee, want to discuss this with us?
Sure, we'd be happy to. This is another one of the incentive opportunities that the city has been negotiating with the supermarket development group for the pressure effort. And we, as the city, created the CID opportunity last year with this kind of a project or with others in mind. And what it does is similar to the TDD that we did for the Loves Travel Stop. A CID allows the developer to put an additional sales tax on for a period of time in order to give them the capital necessary to do the project. In this case, the applicants are asking for three tenths of a cent to be added, and the term would depend on how long it takes to get to the cap that we've put on. But all of that would be discussed in a lot of detail at the public hearing that we would hold on October 20th.
So the only thing this resolution does is set the date and time for that public hearing.
That's right.
Correct. Are there questions for Wendy?
Wendy, if I am average Joe citizen, just tuning into what is going on here, why is it, it seems like we've been talking about this a tremendous amount, and tell me, why is it that this is different than what we talked about two weeks ago? I mean, not in great detail, but doesn't it sound like the same thing? I mean, I could see how somebody would think that.
Sure. Tax increment financing, which is what we've most commonly used as our incentive, is a tool in which the taxes are paid, and the city, county, and school district forego receiving them in order to provide a benefit back to the development, when we do it the way we have done, which is property tax incentives. You have the opportunity for TIFs that are sales tax, and if you go to the city, Kansas City area, you're going to find a number of tax increment financing districts that are, in fact, sales tax. We have not done a tax increment financing district that's sales tax. Other than the transportation district that I mentioned for Loves, we have never offered an incentive around retail sales tax, but we were asked to several times in the last three or four years, which is why we created the opportunity for a Community Improvement District. That would allow the developers, and in this case, it's a 100% owned. They're not asking for it to be over any additional area, only their own, as a way to try and make this project feasible for them.
Any other questions? Okay, I would call for a motion then.
Madam Mayor, I would make the motion that we proceed with this resolution as stated in item 13.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded to accept this resolution as stated in item 13. Is there any discussion? And thank you, Wendy, I didn't thank you. Any discussion? Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please?
How do you vote, Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kayler?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
I vote yes, and motion carries. And that will move us to item 14.
An amendment to Article 24 of the zoning regulations ordinance number 3501-05.
Amendments to Article 24, Section 24-602 regarding poultry and ponies on tracks no smaller than two acres. And Wendy will also, you might as well just stay up here, because there's also one after that.
I will certainly be willing to do that. Okay, so the Planning Commission held this public hearing at the request of a resident, and as you know, we've had requests in the past relative to chickens in particular. In the past, the Planning Commission, during their hearings, have heard lots of discussion, pro and con, about amendments. In this particular case, the application is for parcels that are two acres and more. We didn't have anybody come and speak in opposition, which is in quite contrast to the previous applications. And in a lot of those circumstances, the applicants were asking to allow chickens on a 50 by 150, which meant that those chickens were going to be in close proximity to someone else's residence. In a circumstance where this is allowing a conditional use, if approved, it would have to first be two acres, and then it would have to go through a conditional use process, which means that the applicant party makes an application, tells us more about what they're doing, we're able to take a look at the property specifically, put on any specific conditions that the Planning Commission and the City Commission would so like to do, which allows for a lot closer look, instead of just saying, yes, it can be anywhere. We didn't say that with this amendment. This amendment just says you have the opportunity to come and ask for a conditional use permit if your property meets at least a two-acre section and is in the agricultural district, the countryside district, the single fam, the R1 district, or the R2 district. And then they could go through that process. So if a neighbor came and said, well, I really don't want the coop next to my house on a two-acre tract, clearly there's opportunities to relocate that, should there need to be. The specific amendment is chickens, geese, and other poultry and ponies no greater than 36 inches at the shoulder may be kept on lots no smaller than two acres in size by approval of the conditional use permit. The Planning Commission recommends approval of this amendment by a 5-0 vote. Any questions?
Doesn't sound like there are questions, so is there a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner.
I move to approve the amendment as described in item 14.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Dan.
It is a move and second to approve the amendment to Article 24 of the zoning regulations. Is there any discussion?
I have one more question. How many parcels within the city limits that are not necessarily any edges, would you say that there are?
Yeah, I don't know that I actually can tell you the counts. We did create a map for the Planning Commission so that they could see that, and I don't think it's here.
Was it like 25-ish?
Yeah, well, and those were the ones, in specifically, what we looked at was over two acres, zoned in one of those categories, with already a single-family primary structure on them. Okay, so it's not vacant tracts, can't just create a flats, you have to have the primary. This is accessory uses, so I should have probably cleared that up. So I would say, it was over 20 anyway.
Are the majority of those on the perimeters of town, or is there?
They're all unique to themselves in that they're either on the perimeter, or they already had an assembly of land, because at one time or another, they probably were ag. There's a few that are scattered in between, but they still, at one point or another, probably were some ag parcel, which is why they're still remaining larger.
Any other discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
How do you vote, Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kayler?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
I vote yes, and motion carries. Item 15.
Request to rezon properties from R2 Medium Density Residential District to CS Countryside District.
The Planning Commission recommends denial of the rezoning request by a vote of 5 to 0.
Okay, in this circumstance, this is a rezon request, same applicant. When we met with the applicant, there was some question about which would get the most support, a rezon and a conditional use, or just a conditional use amendment. So they applied for both. The rezon doesn't incorporate a few other tracts. They ask their neighbors to join in. In fact, at one point, they asked their neighbors if they would even support the chickens. We weren't at that point yet, so it's not in your documents yet, but just in support of what they were trying to do, which was to allow chickens and a pony on their track. However, when we go through the zoning changes, as you know, there are both statutes and case law that dictate what it is, the factors that were to consider. When the staff findings were written up, there were a number of factors that really weren't consistent with the recommendation for approval. There are some that are. This isn't an area that's likely to develop, but it's also not adjacent to the countryside, and it would be non-conforming right off the bat, because it's not large enough to be considered in that category. The area is near higher-density residential, which is not that typical for a countryside district, which tend to keep it as kind of a holding pattern for something until development is ready. This is an area that, while it does have some public infrastructure, it doesn't have a lot, but it already has been divided down into smaller tracts. So the recommendation from staff was denial, and this situation was considered after the conditional use, thinking that if that passed, then the zoning itself would not have as much bearing on the applicant's needs. The applicant is in the audience. So the City Commission has a couple of choices when there's a denial from the Planning Commission after a public hearing. There were no comments other than the applicants either. The commission may concur with the the applicants either. The commission may concur with the planning recommendation and disapprove of the rezoning application. They can disregard the planning commission recommendation and support the applicant's request. If they do that, the commission would have to pass the motion by a two-thirds, or four out of five of you would have to overturn that recommendation, in order to overturn that recommendation. Or you can remand it back to the planning commission if you think there are other factors that should have been considered, that in the record may not be, or that you want to instruct them to take a look at something else relative to the discussion that they held on this issue.
Are there any questions for Wendy? So, to clarify, the applicant, we believe, or it's my understanding, anyway, that they were able to get what they wanted accomplished by the amendment.
If the primary purpose is for the chickens and the pony, then yes, going through a conditional use gets them that. Just a rezoning to countryside, given the size of their acreage, does not.
Okay.
So, they would have to combine it with an additional tract-
Okay.
-in order to get to the acreage for chickens, because it required a three-acre minimum, I believe, in the countryside. So, okay?
Okay. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Commissioner.
I move to concur with the planning commission's denial of the rezoning request.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
So, it has been moved and seconded to deny the rezone request, which would be concurring with the planning commission. Is there any discussion? Could we have the vote, please? How do you vote, Commissioner Kaler?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Reid?
I vote yes. So, motion is denied. I guess request is denied. Okay, at this time, then, we would move to report by city manager.
Commissioners, I have several things. October twenty-seventh, I talked to John Devine, and he heard your request about coming back, so he will be here on October twenty-seventh. How's that? All right, there we go. Now, we're on air. You know, the city attorney ought to quit turning off the microphone.
He's protecting you.
Thank you. John Devine will be here on October twenty-seventh to have one of his quarterly discussions with you. I've asked him to focus on the issue of economic development and kind of center it around the sales tax question. So, we will have a light study session that Monday, and plan on meeting with John for two hours to facilitate a discussion with you on that issue, and whatever issue that you would like to have. Cedar Street, you see the work around town? You see the repaving? This question's come up a couple of times. Before I got here, I think you're the only one left on the commission for that project, Commissioner Jorgensen.
I came on during the process.
Cedar North, we'll call it Cedar North, was able to obtain money through KDOT, Kansas Department of Transportation, to redo that street. There was grant money to redo the street, do the curb and guttering, to make it what it is today. At that time, under that program, what you did was you recycled. I think the intent was, instead of the city issuing bonds for the entire length of Cedar, that they would wait until the next time the name came up to the top of the list, and would be able to have funds for Cedar South. Well, that program went away. In fact, the program that we approve every year, where they give us an allocation of about $150,000, took care of that. Now, the interesting thing is that there are plans that exist for Cedar South for doing that extensive of project at some point, if you wish to do it. Is the overlay a lost leader? It is not. The street continued to deteriorate. You drive it every day. It carries heavy traffic. What we did was go in and scarify, take the old asphalt up, lay new asphalt down with a broad, on a smoother surface. The next issue are the curbs. So, we need to start working on the curbs, and just start, in the future, figuring out how much we can do every year, and start rebuilding those curves down there. I doubt if there is any, I doubt if in the near future we will see any major state money for a project like that. And the only other option you would have is to go ahead and issue bonded indebtedness if you wish to do Cedar South, like Cedar North was done. It's an unfortunate set of circumstances, because I don't think anybody at the time, that was a program that I've used in a number of other communities. I don't think that anybody ever anticipated that that program would not be available. We will keep being engaged in discussions with KDOT, just in case something developed. And I believe there was federal money involved in that also.
Do you remember approximately how much that part of Cedar, Blake, do you remember?
It was more than a few million.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was expensive.
Yeah. And I will check and get you the number, what it was. If we hadn't let Scott go on location, he could told us off the top of his head. So, lights. When you leave tonight, there are two trees down at Haley Mills, Haley Park, Haley Mills. That's an actress. That's an actress.
[laughing]
There are two trees.
That's right. Go, Bob.
There are two trees. Haley Park that have pink lights on them in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We will be getting in purple lights for the middle tree in honor of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And in the next couple of days, Mr. Bradley has ordered pink and purple bulbs to put under the eaves and alternate them through, all through the month of October, recognizing those proclamations. And I'll tell you how this came about. I was having a discussion with Dana White in September. The color for cancer awareness, juvenile awareness is gold. It is very difficult to find gold. We have a gold lamp out here. But I started to think, there is something every month that has a special color that we can help raise the awareness of some issue. So, we're reaching out. We're talking to organizations. I've offered them the use of city hall out here if they want to put up a special display throughout the month, or if they want to bring a table in, because we get a lot of citizens through here. It's part of our, it's part of our commitment to our community to help raise awareness on these issues. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
And we need a short executive session with the city attorney here.
Okay, then we will move on to reports by city commissioners, and we'll start with Commissioner Jorgensen.
I have nothing this evening.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Sure. September was a very busy month for Ottawa. We had three great celebrations with our 150-year anniversary, Power of the Past, and then the Car Show. There are countless volunteers that made this thing happen. So, just a thank you to all the volunteers out there that made this thing work, and so efficient, and very successful, and also for the city. I think it looked the best I've seen it in years. The flowers looked great, the weeds were under control, and the grass was cut, and everything just went very smooth. It looked really great. So, very much appreciation to our city crews in making that happen, and the volunteers downtown, making our flowers look great and keeping them watered. So, I think just, September was a great month. Hate to see it end, but we look forward to what we can do next year and see if we can top that. Thanks to the volunteers.
Wonderful. Commissioner Kaler?
None at this time.
And Commissioner Dickinson?
Like many of you, I'm also coming down off the Royals win last night, and I'm excited about that. Had a pretty good migraine going to bed. It was pretty tense last night. Woke up my pregnant wife to let her know that we won, and not sure that was a good idea, but anyways.
It was not. Commissioner, call me some, if you're getting ready, here, here. Call somebody, reach out.
And as I say, in Kansas City, that's what speed do, so.
Thank you for that. And I was just going to also say, go Royals, as far as report by mayor. I have nothing else. You have your announcements there in front of you, and we will need a short executive session if someone would like to make that motion with the city attorney and the city manager present, right?
Ms. Lee.
And Mrs. Lee, for attorney-client privileges, right?
Yes.
For approximately-
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, if anyone would like to make that motion.
I'll so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Fifteen minutes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, nay. And no action will be taken, so we will-